Thank you very much. I came here because I want to hear from you. You know, I just want to know some of the problems that you are having as a nation, as a region, as a community. I want to hear from you. I want to hear from your mothers, the mothers. I want to hear from the young people. I want to hear from the workers. I want to know about Tamale. I want to know about the region. I have embarked on a journey to be a leader. But I can't be on this journey alone. And even if God makes me what I am wishing to be, I become what I become because of you. So before I even become that, I want to know your problems. I want to have this discussion with you. That's why I'm here. I'm gonna start from maybe choosing some areas of either farmers, unemployed, single mothers, families, the youth, protesters, and maybe voters. I want to know all of you. So maybe I would take this from the crowd. Where do I start from? Maybe we start from farmers, right? Farmers, all business people, all youth. Alright, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna first of all, let everybody understand that I wish I can be here for so long so we can go through a lot of issues. But I also have another place that I have to go after here. So please, let's concentrate and let's take some questions down and get some answers. And then let's start to build a relationship so we know where we're going from here. Okay? So first of all, I'd like to hear from a single mother from Tamale that thinks how best can this country become if we were to change things and make it better?
They do not have work. Their children have completed school, they don't have work. You should please listen to their cries and their pleas and help them. They are very happy with your coming because MPP and NDC has not really done anything for them. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. So I'm gonna answer to your question, my dear mother. And can we concentrate so we do this properly? A presenter will come to you. But we are starting from the mothers sector and we're gonna go to other places. But when I mention that person, you go to them and then they can quickly ask the question and we can answer. Mama, I want to tell you that, please, 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 thank you. Mama, people were into problems, saying about NDC or MPP. When people make mistakes in life, we just have to learn from the people's mistakes. And I think that some of our leaders have probably made the mistake of not doing certain things that will make our lives better. I'm here because, you know, nobody knows where they can come from. Nobody knows where they can come from in life. I can be from Tamale. I can be from Boliga. I can be from Ashanti. I can be you and you can be me. So I understand your pain. But what can we do to help people like her? Who have children and their children are not being able to have education and they're not able to have jobs and they're not able to take care of them? When a woman takes care of their child, their child is supposed to take care of them when they grow up. Okay? Now, we have less than 10% jobs. All the people in Tamale and in northern region probably don't know what they are worth, what is on this ground here. You don't know the kind of gold you have here. You don't know the kind of potential you have in farming here. There are people, you have cash, cashew nuts, it's selling in America and you don't know that the people buying these nuts in America is from Tamale. You don't know that some people are using shea butter in America and you don't know it's from you. Because somebody is taking the whole shea butter from you and you are not getting the chance to do the processing of the shea butter. Once it's processed in three different steps, everybody gets jobs. Everybody will start to get jobs. Because the food processing, the shea butter, the commodity processing is what creates job and is what brings money into Tamale. It is what will change the economy in Tamale. And you know what? That is what I want to do for all the regions in the country. It is very, very simple. Okay? Becoming successful is not a hard work. It's just hard thinking. And anyone that thinks for people is successful. So when you are becoming someone, start to think for your people and everyone will grow. Now please, I wish you well and I'm coming to solve your problem. I will find solutions to your problem. I'd like to hear from the next person.
This evening, I'm speaking on behalf of the Stifted Fleet. If you wanna know our challenges, if you wanna solve problems, I tell you, stop that rushing. And to solve our problem, you need to fund incubators, system incubators in system regions. In Kubashikianis, all the Stifted Fleet, you know, machine workers, traders, health nurses, mechanics, what have you, in a work completed within this week. To be the product that learned, manufactured before it can start producing. This is the only challenge that can solve unemployment and water the soil you are looking for.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. The young man has a strong will to help. I guess he did not ask a question, he added a suggestion. And you should have, all of you should have this spirit. I met a young man last night. He was one of the Okada people, but he spoke on behalf of all the Okada people. So he showed his leadership to me. Incubators, yes, all of you should find a way to create one amongst yourselves. The ultimate goal, the ultimate goal is that we're going to create industrial platform here for everyone to start to get jobs in where it's suitable for them.
She said, she's one of the musicians and breaders of the association. Their main challenge is they do two children from a street, the children whose parents are non-wealth financial sound, to train them for free. After training them in the aid, to pass them out is another challenge. They don't have the equipment to pass them out. And as a surprise, we are here to give, we are here to listen to the people of Tamale. She's also presented their challenge for the association. If you can help there with the musician and health nurse and equipment to support the apparel, the passing hours. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna answer this question quickly so we move on to the next one. We have all of these associations, we have all of these shops and traders on the roadside. Everybody's trying to sell something. Do you know everything that we are trying to sell? Do you know every hair that we are trying to put the weave on in people's hair? All of these things are from some places like China? It's from outside? Now, my question for you is that how many people do you think you can employ in one shop that you're selling all of these items that you got from China? You are only selling to the people taking their money and somebody's gonna take it back to them in China? Please, I need you to be quiet. Give me some time and I promise you that by the time you leave here, you will live with knowledge. Okay? I'd like us to skip the noise and obey the voice. It's very important. Because sometimes too much noise does not solve your problems for you. Okay? The best people in this world, they paid attention. They were obedient. So obey the voice and I want to share it with you. Okay? Now, I want Ghana to stop depending on foreign products and just trading. We are the ones that have to start manufacturing. We can create the weavons in Ghana. When we start to do our own weavons, the machine, the plant that does the weave on can give 2,000 people in Tamale jobs. I think that makes more sense than training 10 people, 12 people trying to become politicians. No, let's go the industrial way. It is the only way. Let's start to manufacture our minerals, our products. Let's create our own. Let's make it ours. So when we are not here tomorrow, when we are not here tomorrow, our children would inherit what we started. We will not be poor again. I did not come to give you any promises. I came to share with you the purpose that God sent me on as a young man and I made myself successful, but this money doesn't belong to me. It has to go back to society. I'm gonna die one day and I'm gonna leave it. But my problem is that who am I going to leave it for? It has to be a nation. It has to be a country. It can't just be me myself. So please, let's start thinking like that. Now, I'm gonna take a question. I want you to be inspired and I know that the same way you want to train people, when you get the chance to train a thousand people to learn how to do a weave on, you will do it. So let's start that way. Young man, I wanna hear from the young man.
She's, he's going to ask about education and unemployment issue in this country. But as he's been a young guy, he's afraid after he's been graduated from school in the future. Unemployment rate in this country is a bigger challenge to them, most especially at their constituency from Nantong. So doing, their elders, who are completed senior high and technical universities are unemployed and they are bad at school. And secondly, they are having challenge about classroom blocks in their constituency at Nantong. There are a whole lot of challenge about unemployment issues in education. So he's asking, God willing, when you become a president one day, how are you going to help them, who's especially at Nantong, to have their classroom blocks and employment?
The young kid has asked a very great question. And now, the great question that he asks is that when I educate myself, even if I have education and I grow, how am I gonna get job? And what about the other people who are coming? There are no classroom blocks. So how are they going to get education? Now, this brings us to one of our major problems in this country and it's a disease. The disease is fear. Look how strong, handsome this young man is and he's living with fear. So he just told you something that I want all of you to take that very serious because maybe he's one of the youngest people here. It means he has a brighter future and he has more time ahead of him than most of us here. But this young man is saying that I have fear. Please, I want you to understand the country you come from. First of all, if you want to change in your country, then you should know the people from your country. Because that would let you know how far you have to go to make a change. If this youth have fear today, and I'm glad that this young man got to ask me this question on stage, I wanna tell you one thing for sure. I am not coming to give you any promises. But one thing that I'm bringing to you is hope. And the only thing that is stronger than fear is hope. Because I'm gonna make sure that the youth who are coming are going to have the hope and the reason to know that they have a future in Ghana by changing the economies in regions. This, this is what would answer to his problem. He's asking how are we going to build the schools? But how are we going to build schools and do all the roads in Tamale if it's only politicians that have to do it for us? No, Tamale have to do it for us. The economy that is coming from Tamale is what is going to build the schools. It's what is going to empower the youth. It's what is going to make the youth understand their future. Their future is depending on what is going on in Tamale. If Tamale have these factories, if Tamale have this employment, if Tamale build this youth that becomes entrepreneurial, Tamale would become one of the regions that contributes to the economy of the entire nation. We have to do that. That is the hope I'm bringing you. I am not bringing you an agenda so you can vote me. And I'm not asking anybody to vote for me to become a president. Whether I become or not, take it from me that we need to build this region by any means necessary. We have to build it. It doesn't have to take me becoming a president before that happens. But to secure that young man's future, you are responsible. You, all of you are part of the responsibility. Put your feet down. It is enough of us Ghanaians sitting and waiting for an aid. It is enough of thinking that some president is coming to build our world for us. What if that president lets us down? Then all of us, we have let ourselves down. We need to do things like the other people in the other parts of the world. I would like to give you a good, a great example. When the guy that introduced Microsoft Excel, his name is Bill Gates, when he started to have his vision, he was as young as this young man there. But it's because of the country he came from. It's because of the people that he saw and they had become successful. He was inspired, he was motivated. He had hope, he did not have fear. This fear, young man, stand up. What I can tell you from today, come, come, come and give me a handshake. Come here. That from today, this young man is probably gonna remember that I called him on stage and I empowered him and I told him to get rid of the fear. So all of you, old and young and people here will be proud of him. Now go with that strength and that hope. God bless you. Alright, thank you. So, so he mentioned something about education. Please, education is not only when you go to classrooms and you write books and you write assignments. Education is also when you find out about everything that is around you. Everything around you, surrounding, you have to learn about it. That is education. So you don't have to only speak English to be educated. Okay? You can be a pure Ashanti, Frat Frat Dagoma, Awiza, Aigbe and you are still educated mentally, physically, spiritually. Educate yourself not only by academic books, but educate yourself from the mistakes that your parents are making at home, that they couldn't afford to take you to school. Let that educate you so you don't repeat that mistake and have children and don't work so hard and think so hard to also educate them. That is education. Thank you.
If we, if I ask, if I ask 18% of people in this forum, whether they have hope in Ghana or not, I believe all of them, if they are going to tell me deep down, they have, tell me that they do have hope in Ghana. And it's like our politicians are confused in ruling this nation. Because whenever they come for campaign, they will spell out all the beautiful things that will cause this town. And like what you are telling them. I don't know whether you are a socialist or a capitalist. And secondly, as a businessman. And our fear is that the motive of every businessman is profit. In this nation, I don't know whether you also have a profit motive. If you have a profit motive, then your ideology may not be a socialist ideology. I am a farmer. And I don't know the relationship or what you would do to reduce the energy cost of this country for us to boost our work farming activity. Yes, you can't show.
Thank you.
Because the energy cost is, we can't bear it anymore.
Thank you. So fairly, I would like to still quickly add all your three questions and try and answer it in one. So your first one was still talking about nobody has hope in this country. You know what? If you don't have hope in yourself and you don't have hope in your country, you have a very big problem. You know why? Because your problem is your country and yourself. Yes, you cannot make Nigeria your country. You cannot make America your country. And the people in Ghana are your people. You cannot go and bring white people to make them your people. And you cannot go and bring Chinese people to make them your people. So your problem is your people and your country and therefore you need to start to have the hope. Whether you like it or not, you need to have hope that there is a better tomorrow and find a way to get there. Secondly, you were talking about, you were talking about the other things that happens in this country that makes profits. And profits, of course, is for business people. The only reason why they like profits so much is that it's the only thing that makes sense in the business. If you're not making profits, then why are you doing business? So that's your, your, your answer to the question. That if you don't want profit, then why do you want to become a farmer? So if you're a farmer, are you making profit? Are you making profit? You don't make profit anymore? Sorry, sorry. Alright, so let's talk about the farming issue now. Farmers in this country are having to have problems with energy. The energy that you are paying to do your farming is a very commercial tariff rate. That's what you're using. Okay? We are talking about industrial farming here. That is the change that we want in this country. When we are doing industrial farming, all the farmers in Tamale and in the northern region are supposed to pay a very low rate of electricity. Because you're doing it industrially. We are supposed to have a lot more food processing plants to match the farming that we're going to harvest. Because if you don't have the food processing plant as well... Because if you don't have the food processing plant as well, you cannot grow to the export level. I believe that Tamale has potential to export a lot of things. From Tamale to other parts of Ghana and other parts of Africa. The only way you can do it is to expand industrially, as I'm saying. So, you just need a good leadership. A leadership that can see into the future and help you with these things. Thank you, thank you guys. Thank you.
And what God gave you to know for you to become a president? They were talking about, how will you take care of it? In terms of their processes. In Tamale here, we have lower processes which doesn't go to the market. And my first question is that, in that case, how will you also train it? And secondly, to this, our automobile sector. Now, we have a lot of vehicles that are coming in which are purely electronics. And most of our schools and institutions doesn't train us on those new electronics. So you spend much money and power, importing people from outside to come and train us on these things. So, in your own effort, what will you do for you to add it to our service?
If I become a leader, how would I solve this problem of manufacturing? Okay? It is a total investment. Whenever we decide to put plants, to put factories and create jobs, I like to say that the potential that this region has is a lot more than you are looking at or expecting. I am coming here to introduce the things that I did myself and learned how to build wealth, how to create jobs, how to help people and how to give people. The least I can do is to share the knowledge of something that I have practiced already and I have done already and I've experienced that. But I want to ensure and empower the people in Tamale. This region has a great future and I intend to bring a railway into this place. So, so transportation can go. And in future, the future plan that I have, it might not be me that will do it, but somebody that will come after me is supposed to dredge and bring water into this space. So there's sea, there is a proper transportation. This will solve a lot of your problems. Because you have, you have the resources, you have the rich soil, you have the farming skills. Now, it's left for you to industrialize it and then distribute it. And you have a great economy. Thank you very much, thank you, thank you.